I'm Bill Suckel. I am with the Athens Chapter, Sons of the American Revolution. And we're here this morning to get a proclamation signed for Constitution Week for next week. And with your permission, I would like to read the proclamation.
Please do.
Whereas September 17th, 2019, marks the 232nd anniversary of the signing of the Constitution of the United States of America, which our founders created to secure the blessings of liberty and prosperity for all citizens. And whereas the Constitution is not only the keystone which guarantees the rights, privileges, freedoms, and equality that we as citizens of the United States of America enjoy and expect today, but also serve as a beacon of freedom to the rest of the world. And whereas the growth of our nation and the safeguarding of its principles of justice and opportunity rests upon the laws of the Constitution. And whereas, in order to support, preserve, and defend this great founding document, it is of the greatest importance that all citizens fully understand the provisions and principles contained within the Constitution. And whereas, it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and to its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate this occasion. Now therefore, we, the county judge and commissioners of Henderson County, Texas, do hereby proclaim September 15th through the 21st, 2019, as Constitution Week and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of those patriots of 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained.
Thank you very much. Comments from the court?
Beautiful, the way you read that too, Bill. I appreciate it very much.
Thanks again for all you do.
Without the Constitution, we wouldn't be gathered here today. We wouldn't be able to take the actions on the behalf of the citizens that we represent. Thank you, Bill, for coming and presenting and bringing everyone's attention to this historic day.
I echo the comments of the men up here on this panel. Number one, we appreciate what you and your chapter have done for the county over the last number of years, keeping these items in the forefront. And we thank you very much for that.
Absolutely.
With that, entertain a motion.
So moved to a proof.
I'd like to second the motion, Judge.
Motion made by Commissioner Geislin, seconded by Commissioner Thomas, to proclaim the week of September 15th through the 21st of September as Constitution Week. All those in favor? Item passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item number three, consider and take action on resolution authorizing county grant to Meals on Wheels Ministry Incorporated for the program year of 2020. Gentlemen, in your backup, we have a resolution authorizing our enrollment and involvement with the Meals on Wheels program, which we have been a part of for many, many years. And I believe we have some individuals here today with Meals on Wheels Ministry. Please come forward and introduce yourself, if you would. Please come to the podium. Again, this is an annual grant program that the county participates in, and it is a great program for the county. Please introduce yourself.
Thank you, Your Honor, Commissioners. We appreciate you having us today and your past support, continued support. My name is John Moore. I am the Executive Director of Meals on Wheels. Trudy Williams, if you would, stand up. Trudy is our administrative director, and she's really the one that kind of makes sure everything runs like it's supposed to. So credit where credit is due. I accepted this position just a couple of months ago, back in June, but Meals on Wheels dates back. We are approaching our 50th anniversary, and our mission is to make sure that older folks are able to stay in their homes as long as they can and/or want to because of our well checks and because of the nutritious meals that we serve. And it is because of support from courts such as yours, individuals, other funding sources, that we are able to do that. I will share with you that for 35 years in Ponca City, Oklahoma, my now almost 91-year-old mother-in-law was one of the ones who ran Meals on Wheels in Ponca City. When she reached the point where she could no longer do that, she became a client. And now, at almost 91, she is able to stay in her own home because of Meals on Wheels there. And so every time I go out, which I periodically do, I will take a route and I will go deliver to our clients. I see a lot of my mother-in-law and a lot of these folks that I go and visit. And some of these folks, we're the only ones they see. Either they have outlived their friends, their family, or their family is too far away to come check on them. And it is that human connection that Meals on Wheels provides that allows them to not only stay in their own home, but have the human connection that we all have to have. Here in Henderson County, we have three different what are called congregant sites, in Gunbarrel City, and in Athens, and in Chandler. And we have folks who come together at those sites, and they fraternize. They may play dominoes, but they eat, and they get together there. For the rest of the approximately 350 that we serve in the county, we actually deliver to their home, and we do what are called well check visits. So I really just wanted to kind of explain what we do. If you don't already know, we've been doing it for almost a half a century, and thanks to all of you, we will continue to do that for as long as we can. And if you have any questions, I'd certainly be happy to answer those.
Questions?
You said about 350?
In the county, yes, sir. We do 2,600 total, Monday through. Imagine if you had to get up and fix 2,600 lunches every day. We start in the middle of the night in the kitchen at our facility, and we prepare 20s. I don't, which is good because I'm not a good cook. But we have 2,600 meals that we prepare, and we deliver those Monday through Thursday. And on Thursday, we also deliver a frozen meal, so they'll have something over Friday and for the weekend, too. So it's a lot of meals, and 350 of those are right here in your county.
Good. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I'd just like to say thank you, and I think you made a good point a while ago. When people hear Meals on Wheels, they just think about meals. They don't think about the personal contact you get in the wellness checks.
Yes, sir.
And I think that's an important part of Meals on Wheels, also giving them that, giving these people that human contact.
Thank you for pointing that out. I completely agree.
You said that you've been on the job for...
Two months.
Since June 14th, yes, sir. I've worked for a 501(c)(3) before. This is my first time with Meals on Wheels, yes, sir.
So since that time, you've got everything cleaned up?
I wouldn't say we've gotten everything cleaned up, but it looks a whole lot better than it did on June 14th, I can assure you.
Well, the letter I received on June the 11th surely looked bad, so...
It was bad, and I will completely agree. And for those who don't know, my predecessor didn't exactly do things the way that they were supposed to be done, which is why Trudy and I were brought in. Trudy is a former board member, so she knew how things were supposed to work. And having worked, I've also worked in county government. I worked for law enforcement for the Smith County Sheriff's Office, so I've been to a couple of commissioners' courts meetings, too. So I understand how the government funding mechanism is supposed to work and how the relationships are supposed to work. Everything really is based on relationships, and I am proud to say that those relationships, almost all of them, have been repaired. And we are going forward. The number of donors that we have has gone back up. I got a significant donation yesterday from a local physician who sent a note and said, "Looks better. Hope this helps." We have volunteers. We have more volunteers. They are coming back. And I just have to say, it is a whole lot better. We've got some ways to go in some other areas. And I also have some things that I think that we aren't doing, that we could be doing to help our clients as well. I have some ideas for possibly including therapet, which would give a chance for, you know, folks to come to the congregant sites and interact with some of these trained pets to give them that kind of interaction, and maybe some more organized events for them. I'm here because of people like my mother-in-law. I'm here for the clients. I said to the Lord a few months ago, I said, "You don't know where you want me next, but if you'll open the door, I'll walk through." That's a pretty dangerous offer to make because typically he takes you up on it. And he opened the door, and I walked through it, and I'm glad I did. So with y'all's help and the help of others, we can build this program, make it better than it's ever been.
That's good to hear. At the last COG meeting, there was a good report that things were turning around, and what you've said this morning gives us confidence. And I guess you're the one in charge of all of the administrative reports that were delinquent, and you're on top of those now as well.
Yes, sir.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
For allowing me to ask those questions.
If you would, Henderson County is one of five counties. Is that correct?
Six.
Six counties.
We have six, yes, sir.
What are those other, which ones are the other counties?
We have Smith, Gregg, Henderson, Upsher, Wood, and Van Zant.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Gentlemen, hearing this and the importance of this program, will entertain a motion to authorize county grant to Meals on Wheels Ministry Incorporated for the program year of 2020.
So moved.
I'll second.
Couldn't we add to the motion?
Yeah.
In the amount of $5,403?
Commissioner? Tully?
Yes.
Have that mayor mark it. Motion made by Commissioner Tully, seconded by Commissioner McCam, to approve the resolution authorizing county grant to Meals on Wheels Ministry Incorporated in the amount of $5,403 for the program year of 2020. All those in favor? Item passes. Item number four, and it is at this time 9/16, and item four is our public hearing to discuss the 2019 proposed tax rate for Henderson County. Can I have a motion to move into public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Geislin, seconded by Commissioner Thomas, to move into public hearing. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the portion of the show where you have the floor to speak. If you do wish to speak concerning the proposed tax rate for what we call 2019, since its taxes collected off the 2019 values, this is your time to speak. We ask that you give your name and your address and come to the podium, please. So we open it up. The floor is open to anyone that wishes to speak. Hearing that we have no one, I will make a second call.
Want me to go out and park it?
Stick your head out the door, maybe somebody. Well, with hearing no one wishing to speak, I will entertain a motion to close public hearing.
So moved, Judge.
Motion made by Commissioner Geislin, seconded by Commissioner Thomas, to close public hearing. All those in favor? Item passes. Item number five, consider and take action on county-specific incentive program, or CSI, recommended by the insurance committee. Our HR Director, Ms. Beavers, tell us what we got here.
So as a benefit to the county employees, the Henderson County Insurance Committee has made the decision to recommend to implement a county-specific incentive program that rewards the completion of an annual physical to employees on the county's health plan. Annual physicals have been proven effective in catching diagnosis that in advance that may have not been known to reduce the likelihood of an employee overlooking a major health problem. Annual physicals are covered by the health plan as a preventative service, so there is no cost to the employee. The reward that we are recommending is either a half-day off of work or placing all the names of every employee that completes the annual physical in a drawing for gift cards or prizes at the end of the year.
Would you restate that last part again, what the benefit is?
The benefit is either a half-day off work or placing the names of every employee in a drawing for gift cards or prizes at the end of the year.
Okay.
With the names of the employees that complete the physical.
And the gift cards would be funded through Healthy County?
Yes, sir.
Questions?
And if approved, I would just need authorization for Judge to sign.
On this list, there are three items. We are to choose one. We are to choose three.
We can choose as many as we would like. We are just recommending that we choose one, option number one, to complete an annual physical.
Okay. Insurance committee members?
We had a lot of, we've had a lot of discussion about some way to incentivize the program. I think what we came up with, most of us like, was starting off with trying to get every employee to get that annual physical. That'd be my recommendation, is cover employees who complete the annual physical to owe a premium contribution or to earn a reward. My wish on the reward would be the entrance in the lottery at the end where they could win a gift card or a door prize.
This is in hopes of trying to get more, I guess, more assertive in the next coming years to where we can move on to some of like the other counties that are taking money from the employees' checks as a healthcare premium to help pay for insurance costs if they do not complete their physical exams or the activities that we choose.
And the physical is covered with your insurance?
Yes, both plans.
Both insurance, both plans.
HSA and the PPO.
Employees not out anything. I don't even understand why our employees are not doing that. It's a great benefit. They ought to be participating.
Well, it's painfully apparent to the court with the last proposed increase in our premium costs and the usage in the actual claims that are being paid out in our insurance, a good portion of them are preventable.
Yes.
And it is this program, the way I'm understanding it, is this program is designed so that we can help defer those future premium increases.
This is to catch those high cholesterol, those high blood pressure problems that we're seeing going to the ER and being admitted into the hospital when they could have just been a simple physical. We take care of it in a doctor's office instead. We are seeing it as a overnight health stay at the hospital.
Our initial premium increase proposal was how many dollars?
Seven and a half percent.
Seven and a half percent.
A little over $300,000. And this program helping guard against those type of increases will cost us, what? Is that a...
Just whatever we decide to give out as the prizes, and that's going to come from the Healthy County budget, so.
Which is actually generated from the insurance company.
Insurance company, yep.
I think getting the employees participating, the Sonic program, Sonic Boom program, I think is how we got to go back and try to get our employees thinking that way, to think healthy and protect, you know, going and getting their physical and things that insurance is covering. So I think it's definitely the right way to go.
I'd like to say one thing also is we've made the decision to try to educate our, the county employees more about health insurance. Everybody in the audience knows it's confusing. But yesterday, we had a program for some of the employees, and also having it today. But my guys who went to it were very pleased with the information they got.
Any further comments? What I'm hearing is that we are choosing option one, that that's what is preferred in this. So if there's no further comments or discussion, I'll entertain a motion to select option one with the judge's authorization to sign.
I'll make the motion. Utilizing the Healthy County funds for the gift cards at the end of the year. I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, seconded by Commissioner Geislin, to select option one in the county-specific incentive program to be funded from Healthy County funds at the end of the year. Any further comments? If not, all those in favor? Item passes.
Thank you, please.
Thank you, ma'am. Item six, consider and take action on interlocal agreement with Lubbock County, Texas, to participate in the Regional Public Defender for Capital Cases program. Gentlemen, this has been around for a number of years. It is an interlocal agreement with Public Defender in Lubbock County. This is a program that is funded by the state of Texas to assist counties in defraying some of the costs of your capital murder cases. This particular interlocal agreement provides a court-appointed attorney, an investigator, and a mitigation specialist. It does not cover the entire costs in capital murder trial, but it does defer a portion of them. And for us to be able to access that, it is a contractual obligation, I think, of $26,000, let me find it right here, $26,373 annually for the next two years. Again, $4.1, $4.2 million, I believe, was allocated from the legislature to help support this program due to the burden of capital murders. This court knows too well what those expenses can be, in the range of a half a million dollars on a successful completion of the legal process. We're still, as you know, paying legal fees today on cases that are over 10 years old. But this is more or less an insurance policy to the county. We have overlooked it in the past and chose not to participate with it. But the numbers over the last several years have made it more appealing for us to participate in that program. Be more than happy to answer any questions that I possibly can.
It is a two-year, two-year...
Yes.
The, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
In section 1.01, second paragraph, the $4,200. Is that 4,200 plus the numbers at the back, or is the 4,200 included in that? Because it reads, "Participant recognize that counties from other administrative regions are also participating in the program. Each county participatory cost are based on funding by the Texas Insurgent Defense Commission that is expected to be a total of $4,200 in FY 2000 and FY 2000."
I said 4.2 million.
It is 4.2 million.
That is the state funding. That does not...
That is what we're getting our measly amount of money from.
That is correct. When you say, how to put this, the amount of money that the state is allocating to the program is 4.2. Our portion that we pay in is the 26,000. It is close to being figured that this will return $50,000 to $70,000 worth of expenses That $50,000 to $70,000 would be roughly our portion of the 4.2. Could be, it could be a little bit more.
Do you know how they ran the calculations to come up with that? Because you've got Anderson County that is a lower population than we are, and they're paying $25,000.
It's based off of previous capital murder cases.
Okay.
And it's off a formula of actual cases that have been tried. And that's why you see, you know, yet we are a third larger than Anderson County, but yet our matching is very close.
Yeah, I noticed right below us, you've got Hunt County, which is just slightly larger, at 86,000. And you can see that they've had quite a few cases, and their cost is $60,000.
Yes, sir.
So I just wanted to kind of bring that out, that the cost could go up in 2022.
It could.
If we have a bunch of cases.
And the best way to describe this is that it is an insurance policy for the county, and it is only good for one case.
It just applies to one case per year.
One case per year. But as I said before, one case, and this is a savings. Whereas before, we have been on the hook for everything, one or five. It's the exposure that all local counties have when prosecuting in the state system.
So for additional clarity, if we look at the one case that we continue to pay psychological evaluations on, this would have been covered?
The...
Appeals on that particular case?
No, sir.
Ah-huh.
This is only for the tribe.
That's what I thought.
This is only for the initial tribe.
All right. Just wanted to make sure everyone understood that.
And I'm going from memory. It seems like the initial trial of some in the past was 60% of your overall cost, if I remember correctly.
But you know the one I was referencing?
Yes.
The hits just kept coming over the next 10 years.
It has.
Yep.
When would this agreement begin?
October 1st of this year. And you may remember, we discussed the funding mechanism and the budget, and that would be billed to our current capital murder budget. Which, once again, we have almost $400,000 allocated to that for this year. Any other questions? I want to entertain a motion.
I think it's a good policy for us to have. I would agree that it's an insurance policy, but I'd like to make a motion that we do accept this interlocal agreement for the county judge to sign.
If you would, with all necessary signatures. There's a couple...
With all necessary, okay. Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Tully, to approve the interlocal agreement between... Am I reading this wrong? Excuse me. The interlocal agreement with Lubbock County to participate in the Regional Public Defender of Capital Cases program with all necessary signatures.
Yes, sir.
All those in favor? Item passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Item seven, consider and take action on interlocal agreement between county commissioners' court of Smith, Wood, Henderson, Van Zant, and Raines Counties and the Andrews Center for fiscal year 2020. Gentlemen, this is our contract with the Andrews Center and the other counties that are involved in this for our regional mental health authority. This is something that we do every year, and it's a continuation of that program. We know the limitations of state funding, that is the line item share of these regional programs. But this is our annual, and I believe it's 44,000...
700.
Excuse me?
44,700.
44,700. That's what... That's what this year, and it has been for a number of years. That is what our participation costs have been. This is a continuation of that long practice. And as you can see, there are, this agreement requires multiple signatures. There is really no change to this, other than years and a few locations of facilities in other counties. Ours are remaining the same. Be happy to entertain any questions. There are 27 locations within the six counties, of which the Andrews Centers operate. Any questions?
No questions, Judge.
Entertain a motion on interlocal agreement between the aforementioned counties and the Andrews Center for the fiscal year 2020 with all necessary signatures.
So both to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Geislin, second by Commissioner McCam. All those in favor? Item passes. And we are past the 9:30, so item eight is a second public hearing to discuss the 2020 proposed county budget. We'll entertain a motion to move into public hearing.
I'll make the motion.
Second is motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Geislin, to move into public hearing at 9:36 a.m. for the proposed 2020 county budget. Ladies and gentlemen, same rules as in the previous hearing. If you wish to speak for or against, or just general comment for the proposed 2020 county budget, now is your time. It is open to the floor. Please give your name and your address if you wish to speak at the podium. I will call a second time. Is anyone wishing to speak? Seeing that there is no one wishing to speak, I will entertain a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Geislin, second by Commissioner McCam, to close public hearing at 9:37. All those in favor? Item passes. Item 11. I'm jumping around. Item nine, consider and take action to adopt the 2020 budget for Henderson County. Gentlemen, this is the day that we conclude about three, four months' worth of work. Some under air conditioning and some not. We had been through a bit this year, working on this budget. Does anyone have any comments concerning it? I will say, gentlemen, and to the individuals here with us today, this has been a joint effort by all departments. Not just the court, not just particular ones. This has been a joint effort. And I cannot express enough gratitude to all the departments for what we were undertaking this year. It's been an actual pleasure, my 21st county budget to be a part of. And I sincerely enjoyed this budget more than I have any of the others previously. I know. It was really something to see, how everyone came together and worked to get to where we are here today. And I thank each and every one of you for that. One thing that we will need to do, given to how our payroll falls across two years, if we approve this budget here today, we'll need to make all effective salary, the salaries effective December 22nd.
Will that be a later agenda?
It needs to be done with this one.
Okay.
So. Any comments?
I guess the only comment that I think we would all agree to is we considered probably more things during this budget cycle than we have in past years. Especially when you couple in the radio system that we had to fund an additional payment, which only will leave us one more payment as the new radio system is implemented. You had in the paper that our auditor, Emory Lee, and myself attended the legislative session in Austin last week. And it wouldn't take me too long to tell you what all I learned, because I didn't learn much. So you might say, why did you spend the money of county taxpayer dollars to go? Well, I didn't know I wasn't going to learn much. And you know, lots of times you have to go and find out. Because it was billed as something that was going to be extremely valuable. But there is value that I think Ms. Lee and I brought back. The value is, when you sit and you talk and you listen to the questions and the various breakout sections of how counties are going to function under a 3.5% revenue cap, and the other things that the legislature did in the first part of this year, the '86 legislature did. The one thing that sort of jumped off the page or hit me square in the eyes was that we have done a lot of things correctly in Henderson County. Not just this year, but over the past several years in preparation for what we have in front of us. Wouldn't you agree?
Allheartedly.
There are some counties out there that are just absolutely struggling. They're not sure what directions to go. And one of the things that is sadly being propagated, I think, by the legislature indirectly, is they want county governments to kind of be like school boards. And that is fall in love with bonds. And anything and everything that we do, we go out for a bond. The radio system, that would have been the way recommended for us to do it, is take on debt. And you know, we have been adverse to debt in this county. And it puts us in a very different position. Because I think there's only 17 counties in the state that are debt-free. So we're in a league of our own, as the old movie title was. So I brought that back. Very proud to live in Henderson County. Emory? So there you go.
And again, that's why I go back to what you just here. Two different departments went, same perspective. And you see the fact of what we've been able to do, working together, from sheriff's department to the clerk's offices, just across all boundaries. No budget is loved by everyone. I consider it a win when we get a consensus. And consensus means, eh, I kind of like it. But I'm shooting for that win when we get a good, strong consensus that moves us to the future. And that's what we've been able to do with Henderson County. And I just appreciate everyone's participation. So, any other comments before we entertain a motion?
So moved to approve the 2020 budget.
With salaries beginning on the 22nd?
With the salary increases beginning at the first pay period of 2021 on December the 27th.
Yes.
2020.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Geislin, second by Commissioner McCam, to approve the proposed, I believe it should be proposed amended, or the amended-proposed 2020 budget with salary implementation to begin December 22nd. Is that acceptable?
That's acceptable.
Thank you. All those in favor? Item passes. Item 10, consider and take action to adopt the 2019 tax rate for Henderson County. Gentlemen, the tax rate that we proposed is the same as it was the previous year, that being 47.477984. It is the same rate as the previous year, and I believe for the preceding five years, four years. And this is to fund the coming 2020 budget. Any questions or comments?
No questions, Judge.
Hearing that, we'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'd like to make the motion to approve our tax rate of 2019, .477984.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Thule, to, excuse me, to approve the proposed tax rate of .477984. All those in favor? Item passes. Item 11, consider and take action to approve the preservation and restoration record plans for the county and district clerks for the 2020 budget. Gentlemen, this is a portion of our responsibilities in conjunction with county clerk and district clerk using, I've always referred to it as archival fees, but it's the preservation and restoration records plan for both departments. This is statutorily a requirement. We have them presented here within our agenda packet. First one being the county clerk, and the second one being the district clerk. Any questions?
Well, yes.
Okay.
If, we look at the real property records. So is the document that's contained states that it's $5, $5. So of the $26 that we collect for that real property record, the auditor pulls the $5 from the 26 and puts it into the preservation. Is that how that works? So if we look at Platts subdivision, MLR, maximum 18-inch, 24-inch, there's $1 for the archival fee. And so what we're collecting is the $9, because it's $10. $1 goes for this, and the rest goes... I'm just quoting numbers that were approved back in 2016. That is on the county's website.
These numbers are set by statute, is my understanding. That is in the records preservation fund. They set it in statute as to what you are able to collect. Is my understanding.
They didn't change anything on this, that I heard.
Angie, you worked the last three weeks in conjunction, I know, with the county clerk's office. What's information that you have on these? Did not change.
Okay. You understand my concern?
Yes.
If the state has set the amount that we have to give them, and that amount is, let's say, $10, and that means that we're not going to have the dollar to put into the preservation fee, because we have to send it all to the state.
Yes.
If this has all been checked, checked, and double-checked, then I'm good to go.
Do you give the double check, Angie? Or county clerk?
The only other thing I will say, if I, you know, kind of go yippee-skippee on through here and look at the district, you know, a lot of their preservation fees are a lot higher than the county clerk's office. I was, that was kind of what caught my eye, that intervention was a $10 preservation fee. And if you look at some of the things in the clerk's office, you know, it was a $1 fee. So I don't know why the preservation of certain documents in Betty's office would be higher than Mary Margaret's.
I believe it's because of the volume. The volume in the district clerk's office is much less than what is run through the county clerk's office. And when, because the county clerk's program began two years prior to the districts, and that was one of the issues that they worked out, was because of the volume of documents coming through the clerk's office generated substantially more money than the volume that would run through the districts, because of all the property and all the different things. Whereas district handles those issues within the district courts. And they set it at a higher setting than the county clerks to generate more revenue for that preservation.
All right, well, if that be true, then it adds some humor to it. Because if you look at tax lawsuits, there's $10 there. Must be a lot of those. But motion for enforcement, not too many of those. Only $1.
Any other comments or questions? Entertain a motion to approve the preservation/restoration record plans for the county and district clerk's offices.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Geislin, second by Commissioner McCam, to approve preservation/restoration record plans for the county and district clerk's offices for the 2020 budget. All those in favor? Item passes. Item 12, consider and take action to transfer a pickup bed toolbox from surplus inventory to maintenance. Ms. Nicholson?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I was approached a couple of weeks ago by the maintenance department, one of the employees. I wanted to know what was going to happen with the toolbox that was on the truck that's going to be in the next auction. They showed an interest in it, so it's not being utilized by any of the departments at this time.
Gentlemen?
Would it come off the branch truck?
Yes, sir.
Questions? Entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion. Second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Thomas, to approve the transfer of a toolbox from surplus inventory to county maintenance. All those in favor? Item passes. Item 13, consider and take action on authorizing the transfer of two dynamo printers from surplus to the sheriff's office and one dynamo printer from surplus to the audit office.
We have seven left.
Seven left.
There's your question.
Hear ye, hear ye.
I tried to give all of them to the sheriff's department, but they said they only needed two.
Entertain a motion.
So moved to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Thule. All those in favor? Item passes. Thank you, ma'am.
Is that seven left after these two?
I think they're multiplying. Item 14, consider and take action on special road use indemnity agreement and permit for County Road 3613 located in Precinct 3. Commissioner McCam?
This is a special use indemnity road permit for our trucking company on 3613. And they're moving in to take one of the they're moving in to take one of the buildings off of the communications tower there and move it out. It is, where is the name of the company?
Davis Crane?
Davis, it is Davis Crane. And this is, really, this is the first time I've used this special use indemnity, so it's, this is no to me, but they were bringing heavy equipment down 3613 to move that, that building off of the site. And they have filled out all the information that we asked for and, and paid, and have the proper insurance.
And I believe there's a second one that's going to be brought in conjunction with this, or is this?
Yes, it's the other company that they're using.
Okay.
This is Davis Crane, and the other one will be a, a different trucking company that they're using. But they have, they have all the insurance that, that we require.
Questions for Commissioner McCam?
If there are none, I move that we approve the special road use indemnity for Davis Crane on 3613, County Road 3613.
With necessary signatures?
With the commissioner's signature.
And the county judge.
And the county judge on that special one.
Yes, sir.
I'll second your motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Giesling, to approve the special road use indemnity agreement and permit for County Road 3613 with all necessary signatures. Any further comments? If not, all those in favor? Item passes. Item 15, consider and take action on accepting a check, number 220332529, for sixty-seven hundred dollars from Encore Electric Delivery for damages to County Road 2938 South located in precinct two. Commissioner Tulley?
Yes, Court. I was, had been approached by some people that said the road was messed up and found out that Encore was doing some electrical facility upgrades on County Road 2938, and working diligently with Tom Trimble, our area manager representative, and we came to agreement that Encore would help repave that road, and we have a check, I have a check in hand for sixty-seven hundred dollars.
Questions for Commissioner Tulley?
No questions.
Any deals need to get worked out? Entertain a motion.
I remove that we accept a check for sixty-seven hundred dollars from Encore Electric Delivery for damages to County Road 2938 located in precinct two.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley, second by Commissioner Thomas. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Item passes. Item 16, receive financial reports. Believe we have today the financial reports from all five JPs.
We had, it was presented this way a couple of weeks ago. Is this what we're going to be rece, receiving as routine? I mean, this is a lot better than what we have received in the past. I mean, this is coming right out of Odyssey. This is a good report.
Yes, sir. The comments that were received in previous commissioners' courts concerning this, we worked with Audit Office to get these generated so that you have a complete snapshot of all six, oh, excuse me, all five. We haven't had six in a good while.
No, we have not, not since 2011.
I'm slipping. So, thank you for the comments on it. This is what we tried to do, was to make them more concise and give you a better look.
Yeah, this is a good report. The other was extremely hard to read, comprehend, and, you know, it wasn't, it was just one JP this week and a different JP. This here gives us a good, clear financial overview of what's happened at the JP offices. So who's generating, is Jane doing this?
Jane has, has set up where it's emailed directly every month and automatically.
Super.
It puts it out on the first.
I've spoken to Jane some time ago about it, so this, this is great. So convey my thanks to Jane and her good work on this. This is a good report.
And for the public, I'll remind everyone, these are available for viewing after court in the county clerk's office. Item 17, consider and take action on payroll distributions and accounts cash sheets. Mr. Bynum?
Yes, I do have the payroll distribution totals for biweekly, number eighteen.
Questions, comments? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve the payroll disbursement total of biweekly eighteen.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner McCam, to approve the biweekly eighteen payroll distributions. All those in favor? Item passes.
I have no questions.
Thank you, sir. Item eighteen, consider and take action on submitted contracts, and we actually have three today. I believe the court got notification from the sheriff's department on a contract with Wood County. Sheriff, would you like to?
Good morning, Court. Good morning. Wood County approached us, actually, they approached us a couple of weeks ago, and we didn't have court last week, and then they contacted us again last Friday, and their jail is full, and they needed beds, so we told them that we would help them in any way we could. This is an interlocal agreement between Henderson County and Wood County. It's our standard interlocal agreement with, same as we've got with Rockfall and Vazan County. The only difference in this agreement is it's a forty-dollar forgiveness rate instead of thirty-five or thirty dollars forgiveness rate. Where we're sitting at today is we decided forty dollars was spared for both parties because we've got several, we've got a lot of people in jail right now. Our current population this morning is four hundred and thirty-two, and ninety-five of those were out-of-county inmates. We spoke with ICE yesterday, and we should start seeing those inmates at the end of this month. So that's why we went to forty dollars with Wood County. They've agreed to that. We just need to get the documentation from our board there.
Questions for the sheriff?
It's a good job, Sheriff, for doing that.
This may not have anything to do with it, but out of that forty dollars, do we, do we feed them and give them?
That's correct. Forty dollars for medical. Now, the medical charges, it's written in the agreement that they will reimburse Henderson County for all the medical expenses. We'll carry on.
And they're providing transport.
They're providing, yes, sir. All the thing we're doing is housing.
Right.
So they need to go to the doctor, Wood County comes over and takes them?
Well, if, if there's an emergency situation, we would take them to the ER. We would contact Wood County and work with them, and what's happened in the past is they usually come and take that inmate back to their county.
Questions, comments? Any more? Entertain a motion.
So moved to approve. Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Giesling, second by Commissioner Tulley, to approve the interlocal agreement and contract with Wood County for the housing of inmates. Any further comments? If not, all those in favor? Thank you.
Did they give us any idea of duration?
They did. I just got that.
The other two that we have, Ms. Lee has to present, I believe, first one is STW?
We're going to wait on that one until next week.
Going to wait on that one until next week? Then the other one's?
The Westlaw, I need to get done with that.
The Westlaw with Law Library. Okay, would you speak to that?
Yeah, this is just a, a contract that comes up every three years to provide services for the Law Library. We, we get the funds to pay for this through civil filing fees, other than on delinquent taxes. The court set it at twenty dollars many, many years ago. We were having a problem with Westlaw that is costing us more than we were bringing in on revenue, so this should be about breaking, then this can be twenty-seven thousand a year, and we're estimating about twenty-eight thousand on revenues.
Questions for Ms. Lee?
No, I didn't have any issues with them.
Who do we need authorized to sign on this? Okay. We'll entertain a motion to approve the three-year agreement with Westlaw, with the judge's authorization to sign.
So moved. I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Giesling, second by Commissioner McCam. All those in favor? Item passes. Any other contracts?
No.
Item nineteen, consider and take action on request for right-of-way permits.
We have one at precinct three and one at precinct.
Commissioner McCam?
I have one from Bethel Ash Water Supply Company for a road bore under eighty-five oh eight, County Road 3502. It's a hundred feet private to private. All fees are paid, and Bethel Ash always does a good job when they come in.
Questions for Commissioner McCam?
Hearing none, I, I move that we approve the right-of-way for Bethel Ash Water Supply Company for a bore under County Road 3502 in precinct three, with commissioner's signature to authorize.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Thomas, to approve the, the right-of-way permit for Bethel Ash for County Road 3502 with commissioner's authorization to sign. All those in favor? Item passes. Commissioner Giesling?
Yes, I have a road bore as well, a request coming from Bethel Ash Water Supply Company. They want to provide service to a new customer on Two Mile Circle. Two Mile Circle is a, is a road off of forty-eight twenty-seven or Hobson Road in the Lake Athens area. They will be boring from the west side of the road to the east side of the road to provide that service. All the documents provided are in order. We've been out there working in that area, there's no issues.
Questions for Commissioner Giesling?
Hearing none, Judge, I move we approve the right-of-way, right-of-way request to bore County Road Two Mile Circle in precinct four with the commissioner's authorization to sign.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Giesling, second by Commissioner McCam. Any further comments? All those in favor? Item passes. Item twenty, consider and take action on submitted budget amendments. Believe we have none. Item twenty-one, consider and take action on payment of bills.
Yes, this morning, the bill total is eight hundred and seventy-one thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Commissioner Thomas, questions?
I have no questions, Judge.
Commissioner Tulley?
No, sir.
Commissioner McCam?
I have none.
Commissioner Giesling?
Oh, holy cow, not ready. Trying to sign things down here. I've got to say something. It's good to see that we made our final payment to the appraisal district. Looks like we're going to be a little bit under budget for workers' compensation, that They're dancing over at City Hall, Athens City Hall, this morning, as we pay twenty-thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-seven-dollar water bill for the jail. First time we broke twenty thousand in the nine years I've sat on this court. We broke twenty thousand, folks, per month to keep our inmates clean. And you got a little bit carried away with your St. Augustine cash. Six hundred and fifty dollars. Y'all take a look how nice that St. Augustine looks around the courthouse. Thank the judge, send him a card, because we like our St. Augustine. Six hundred and fifty dollars to water grass. I sure couldn't afford that. Well, I had taxpayers' account, I sure can't. I don't think I should say anything else, I'll just stop at that point. Back to you, Judge.
I have no questions. Entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion, by the bill. With much sadness, I will second it.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Giesling, to approve the bills in the amount of eight hundred, seventy-one thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars and ninety-nine cents. All those in favor? Item passes. Item twenty-two, consider and take action on submitted Platts. No Platts.
No Platts.
Item twenty-three, open and consider bids.
No bids, sir.
No bids.
Bids.
All right, I've got Meals on Wheels, Constitution Week bills, and one bore.
One bore. Item twenty-four, convening to executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.074 regarding personnel matters, namely, discuss county veteran's service officer position. Gentlemen, you want to convene at ten-twenty-five or go straight into its, up to the court?
I'd like five minutes, ten-twenty.
That'd be fine. If we hear a motion.
I'll make the motion. We convene into session at ten-twenty.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Tulley, to convene into executive session at ten-twenty. All those in favor? Item passes. Thank you very much.
Item 25, we need a motion to re-convene into open session.